Okay, welcome everyone. This is Tuesday, February 28th. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Mayor Protem, do we have any announcements or introductions?
We have a couple announcements, Mayor. For those of you who haven't been checking the weather, we are under a winter storm warning effective Wednesday, which means that we might experience significant accumulation. If you don't have to be out, don't be out, but if you are out and about, please remember to drive safely. Additionally, it is still not too late to sign up for hazardous waste pickup. So if you're interested in doing so, please visit Prescott-AZ.gov.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We'll start off with an invocation from Pastor Matt Kotman of the Solid Rock Christian Fellowship Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance conducted by Councilman Moore.
Would you join me in prayer? Father, we do thank you for your favor and your goodness. Thank you that we can gather, that decisions can be made, that we have those abilities. We would ask, Lord, that in this meeting, your wisdom would come to bear in decisions that are made. We pray for the flourishing of our community. We pray that that which is good would stand. We pray for your help and your guidance. And, Father, as you look ahead even at the weather tomorrow and the coming days, we pray for safety in our town, that you would protect people from harm and that the plows would be able to do their jobs well. Thank you that you are good. Thank you for this day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please try and move in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Hello. I'm here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Well, I'm not near as creative as Councilwoman Cantelme. I'll just say yes.
And Councilman Tenny.
Yes, ma'am.
All are present.
Very good. Do you need a minute, city clerk?
No, I'm good. Open call to the public. City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. I do have one card today from Gerald Sidlovsky.
Good afternoon, Prescott. Wonderful, Mayor, city council members, and citizens. I am lay brother Stephen Gerard Sidlovsky. I've just come from your Arizona March for Life. I've provided you packages. I'm not sure if you've been given them yet or not, or you will be given them. Conveniently, you will get a yellow card. I'm a citizen for life and peace. For those of you who care to know, I also am a former naval enlisted and commissioned officer veteran. Okay? You will also be getting a Bible bookmark, and on that wonderful Bible bookmark, you'll get some holy scripture, which happens to be pro-life. In particular, Psalm 139 on this Bible bookmark is a good one, and Deuteronomy 7:9. Read that whole scripture. I think it will enlighten you in the journey of life and peace. You will also be getting the marketing flyer that I handed out to many citizens throughout the state of Arizona, marketing the Arizona March for Life. And I'm delighted that I was even able to briefly meet. I heard about her nationally. I think a governor candidate, Kari Lake, she did attend the March for Life, so that you do know that. While I travel the country and travel in the new direction and help citizens and city council members such as yourself understand the new direction of pro-life, I was able to stop by your League of Cities and Towns, which is that beautiful white building right next to your state capitol in Phoenix. They conveniently provided me your 18 or so cities for the whole state of Arizona that have a city charter. That is also provided for all of you, too, which is why I'm delighted to be here today, because Prescott has a city charter. And your city charter, you can now actually declare personhood in your city charter. Once our recent Supreme Court made its big decision to move in the new Dobbs era, that opened up the possibility of bringing power back to the citizens. And we all know that wonderful citizens have the ability to move your charter review. I heard you're going to have a charter review. So you can actually put personhood in your city so that you'll always be a pro-life personhood city. Why do I say this as one of the top personhood speakers in the United States? Before 1973, it was implied law that we were persons peacefully developing in our mother's womb, okay? That was implied law. Presently, after 1973, things got a little bit different in America, and so that implied law became debatable, and it became legal standing. I don't like to say that terrible A-word, because it's a legal word today that I'm going to just lightly spell it out, A-B-O-R-T-I-O-N. It's a legal word today in our society. And now with the Dobbs decision, what's happened is the decision-making authority now rests at the state capitals, but the newspapers have not been carrying it. It now rests with your legislative governing body and with the citizens. I'm an expert petitioner. I haven't done petitioning in a while, but I did actually do petitioning in Arizona, and I actually did some petitioning right here in Prescott. I know there's a network of petitioners ready to go. If you all decide to have your study groups, you decide that this is a good review for your city charter, and you want to put the personhood language in the city charter, you will also have another document which supports what I've been working on. My hometown of Lorain, Ohio...
Mr. Sidlovsky, please conclude.
Please conclude. Thank you. You'll be getting a newspaper article which justifies the personhood language that can be included in your city charter. Please include me in any discussions, contact, email me, or call me. I would be delighted to meet and talk further about this new possibility. Thank you for your great love of your city, and God bless you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull any items off of the consent agenda? Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item D.
Okay, so we'll pull item D off the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for the remaining items.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items 7A through C. Second.
Have a motion in second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, Councilman Moore, item 7D.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question about this council item. I read through the packet thoroughly, and it looked like perhaps there was a template for the language for C and D, like it was the same material, even though it's very different habitat that's being treated. It talks about bark beetle and things like that, and I don't really think bark beetle's an issue for the Constellation Trail clearing. And as a frequent trail user of the Constellation Trail, I love that basin area that has amazing habitat with huge, huge old-growth oak trees. And I just wanted to maybe get a better understanding of what kind of mitigation they'd be doing in the Constellation Trail area because of the unique habitat and the heavy use for that area by hikers on a regular, daily basis, because I would hate to see it thinned heavily in the Constellation Trail area by the Constellation plain wreckage where it's got the most growth.
Sure. Councilman Moore, that's a good question. So I don't know if you've ever seen some of the fuels treatments that we've done in the past, but yeah, they're very... They look really good when they're done. They look better than they did before. Taking out old-growth trees like that is not of concern to us. It's the smaller stuff that will carry fire on the ground and in wind events. Those old-growth type of trees are very fire-resistant and would remain, and it'll just give it more of a park-like appearance. You know, being along a highway and stuff like that on a windy day, you get a car fire, cigarette thrown out, you could rake out that whole little basin in no time. So that's the concern with the Constellation Trail project.
Thank you. I was just concerned, because I don't want it to be... I know sometimes the fire-wise treatment can be very heavy-handed, like a masticator and some of the machinery that they go in there, and it looks very, very heavy-handed when it's done. It doesn't look park-like. It looks like it was destroyed.
Yeah, and we'll work closely with Parks and Rec to make sure it's a really good prescribed treatment.
Okay, thank you. That was my only concern.
Councilmember Rusing?
I just wanted to make sure that you were talking about ladder fuels that are very important, because that's what causes the main problem, transferring the flames up to the older-growth trees. So it'll actually maybe save them and be better for them. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other further discussion or concerns?
Thank you, Mayor.
entertain a motion then?
I move to pass Consent Agenda Item D.
Second.
Motion in second on item 7D. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Item A is Legislative Update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Tyler Goodman, interim city manager. And starting off again with bad news, hopefully the meeting gets better after my legislative update. But the first one is not so bad, in that it's the Glassford Dells Regional Park, and obviously, we're very much in support of this, and it's doing... It's making its way through the process. It did pass through the House Appropriations Committee, and it's waiting to be heard on the House floor. There's still general support, from what I understand, for it, and it's, again, making its way through the process. And please remember that it probably won't be a typical bill that will get to the governor's office. It will most likely be folded into the budget process, which is ongoing through the session, but it's still looking good for now. The next one... Well, the next few, we've gone through almost...
Just a minute. I did want to make a comment. I heard some people in the public that were confused about the title. Working on the committee with Prescott Valley and the county and state land and state parks and recreation, we discussed properly naming this particular regional park proposal, even though it was kind of commonly called a Glassford Hill Regional Park. We felt that in the long run, if we wanted to be able to attract ecotourism and other visitors from either in the state or out of the state, then having some connection with the Granite Dells, along with the fact that it would be a significant part of Glassford Hill, we could combine that in the name and make it a little more marketable in the future. So that's where that name change came from.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor, for that. And again, this bill would appropriate $3.5 million to come down to the partnership, the Prescott Valley-Yavapai County City of Prescott partnership, to purchase Glassford Hill, or at least to begin that process, which could take multiple years, but it's a good start, for sure. The next few set of bills, I try to categorize them by impact, so that the next few have to do with impacting potentially local revenues. That first one being the corporate income tax reduction, which did pass out of the Senate, 31 to 29 on party lines. And this, if followed through and if adopted at full implementation, it would be about a million-dollar hit annually to our state shared revenues. So that one is obviously a concern. The food tax, eliminating tax on food for home consumption. There's actually three bills on this, and they're all identical, in that there's a House bill and two Senate bills. They are still alive and going through the process. However, neither the House version or the Senate versions have been passed out of their original chambers. And so there is some thought that the governor would veto these if they arrived at her desk, very similar to the next bill, which had to do with municipal tax exemption on residential rentals. So that would have eliminated that tax revenue for cities. And this one did reach the governor, the Senate bill version, and it was vetoed late last week. And so there's thought that that trend would continue with many of these tax elimination bills. There again is another version of that bill in the House. It has not made its way out of the House yet, and it probably won't, considering it's very similar to its counterpart in the Senate. So that is good news, at least that we understand that the governor was against that portion and may be on the food-for-home-consumption tax as well. Again, those would be many millions of dollars lost from our revenues, which certainly would impact the general fund and therefore police and fire. TPT, limiting TPT on diapers and feminine hygiene products, that is still making its way through. That one is pretty minimal. It would eliminate about $80,000 to our ongoing revenues. So still on the list, but not as grave of a concern as others. This bill, House Bill 2284, is very similar to one that we dealt with last year. What it would do is appropriate money through the Arizona Department of Housing to essentially assist with homelessness throughout the state. But the concern that cities have, the League of Cities and others, is that... And this is a lot of language, I apologize, but I'll kind of highlight the concern, is that political subdivisions are prohibited from adopting or enforcing policies that discourage or prohibit the enforcement of any order or ordinance that prohibits public camping or sleeping or obstructing a public right-of-way. So essentially, if you're going to receive this money, then you can't do this. You can't perform your duties as a local government. And so while I don't believe there's any mandate that we do accept it, it could potentially put us in a precarious situation, and it's better to just be avoided. So I know the League of Cities is opposed, and I believe most cities throughout the state are opposed to this bill. It's passed out of its committee, but has not passed out of the House, out of its chamber The bill, we talked about this last time, that was a bill changed from making it so that we would have to provide five-minute or better emergency response times from our police services. This has... It died in committee, so what happened was it became a study committee that would happen during the summer. So the bill has been redrafted to reflect that language, that there'd be a study committee, and it passed out of the House, 41 to 19. We're tracking it closely, and we've even asked that Chief Bondi participate if we have that ability. So we're still kind of waiting on that. But that bill is no longer a concern as far as making us or requiring us to respond within five minutes of emergency calls. The next two bills are similar to each other, Mayor, bills that we talked about as well. They're Administrative Review and Approval of Developments. This would allow cities, city councils by ordinance to authorize administrative city staff to review and approve certain things as far as development. Some include preliminary Platts, development plans, site plans. Now, again, it would allow cities to do it. If this bill passed, it would not force the council to do it. The bill that would force us to do a lot is still Senate Bill 1117. Now, this language hasn't been updated yet, but the bill, as I went over a couple weeks ago, would essentially upend our zoning, upend our single-family zoning, upend density, height restrictions, you name it. It really is probably one of the worst bills I've seen, and I've seen a lot of bills. And so the League is working extremely hard. We have Barry Aaron's on this as well, working with legislators on our behalf to express our concerns. We are reaching out to our local delegates from LD1 about this, and it really... What I'm hearing is that there's probably not the votes for it to get out of the Senate, but they're counting those votes very closely, and there's still some wiggle room going on. And so we are pushing hard that this really would upend any local control of development, general plans, any public input on any of these serious issues. So it's too much of a wholesale change of the process, I think, to get enough support to pass, even out of its first chamber.
The next one, again, municipalities and partisan elections.
This would allow cities to run partisan elections, to list your party on the ballot, and that one passed out of the Senate, 18 to 12, and is going over to the House to go through the process there. Inspections on sober living homes, this passed out of its Senate committee and is still waiting to be heard on the Senate floor, but it would give us that authority to inspect sober living homes for really fire code and zoning reasons. And then the political signs in the tourism zones. As you know, right now, we have the ability to say no signs in specific areas of the city, which the state legislature graciously gave us a few years ago, and we've used it well. This would change it so that we basically couldn't gerrymander our mapping to enforce said zones. Right now, we do have a zone that follows Highway 89 and would most likely be considered against or not in compliance with what this bill would establish. So we are opposed to that, and we've shared a lot of information with the League of Cities from our perspective and from how we're enforcing the current law. And so they're using that to help them try to push back against this bill. And the last one is a Senate concurrent resolution, which would push to the 2024 general election ballot the question of whether to amend the state constitution to repeal charter cities in Arizona. Now, I was... When I first saw this, I was obviously extremely concerned. I did hear in the meantime, however, which isn't perfectly finalized, but the thought is that even this were to get on the ballot, and even if it were passed, it would not allow the revocation of our city charter, just future cities from adopting city charters. So that's still a question up in the air, but obviously, we don't want to even get to that point. So we're very much against this. The League of Cities is all over this, and many of the charter cities in Arizona. So that is my happy update again, Mayor and Council. Happy to answer any questions for you.
Councilman Sishka?
Tell her on this last one, charter cities. I understood that the reason for this was that this legislator didn't like the way Tucson handled their elections. So if, in fact, Tucson's a charter city, and this wouldn't affect charter cities, what in the world is this for?
I'm sure the intent is that it does affect current charter cities. The question legally is, could it? Could state voters supersede local voters on adopting a municipal charter? That's kind of the big question in the air, and that is, in particular, the elections. We have ours on odd years, which is odd, right? But they... The state legislature does not like that typically, for cities to be on these off-year elections. And so they've tried for many years to get around that and force us onto the more generic election cycle.
Well, thank you for monitoring that, Tyler, and we'll follow the progress or lack of progress as some of these bills advance to a vote and then a potential decision on the governor's desk.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 8B, update regarding the Mayor's Charter Review Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a brief update for you all today. The Mayor's Charter Review Commission is continuing to meet twice a month and working with staff on updates to the city charter to be proposed for the general election this November. As a reminder, we'll be conducting our study session meeting on April 11th, and at that time, we will have some proposed ballot language that I've been working on with the legal department based on recommendations from the commission, and we'll present those to council, as I said, on April 11th, and then we will bring it back at a future voting meeting to get that determined so that we can get them, if that's the desire of council, on the ballot for the November 7th general election, which we would need to do by June.
So we'll see a recommendation of a list of potential amendments to the city charter, and we'll have an opportunity to either weigh in on whether we would like to see those actually end up on the ballot...
Correct.
...and then possibly amend some of the language that is presented in that first draft.
Yes.
Right? Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll move to item C.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2023-1824, in ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of real property to the Prescott Common LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said sale.
Good afternoon once again, Mayor and Council. Tyler Goodman, interim city manager. Happy to bring forward to you an agreement to sale and redevelop this property that we're currently sitting at. If you'll... Just a little background, the Mayor and Council approved that staff move forward with negotiations with the Stro architecture team and Phoenix Rising Investments. That was back in October, and since then, we've been working on some of the timelines, the details, how the approval process would roll out. And really, as far as the city process goes, the first step is to have a sales agreement for property. So that's what we've drafted here. Now, I'll do a little breakaway here and say that a development agreement will also be negotiated. Upon approval of this, that's when we would then dive into that next document and contract, which will really get into a lot of these specifics. Simultaneously, they'll go through their approval process with Preservation Commission, planning and zoning, water issues, and ultimately back to council. So just for the public's sake, who may be confused about the process, this is definitely not the end-all, be-all. This is actually the first step of many, many steps to get a project to not only completion, but even before that, to just begin construction after its approvals. So I'll touch on the highlights of this document. It's about eight or nine pages, which includes a signature, so it's really probably six or seven. We'll go through just some of these highlights. We're selling the property for $2,500,000. It appraised at $2.2 million. We have set up so that there is non-refundable money, which are... $50,000 is attached to a water approval, and then $50,000, which is attached to an approval of a height variance, potentially, a development agreement, and it's at the later of those things. So a non-refundable deposit essentially of $100,000, assuming those items that are being requested here in the future are granted. Let's see. Let me get down to the tentative timeline. The project will make its way first to the Water Issue Subcommittee, this coming next to... Well, the next meeting on March 7th, and then city council will consider approving that water allocation at the March 28th council voting meeting. After that, they plan to come to the Preservation Commission first, which that group will look at height, which I know is a big question of many in our community, as well as the design, the look, all of those things that most people are curious about. And so at this point, you may notice, I'm not pulling up any renderings. Those haven't been developed yet as far as being ready to come to Preservation Commission or to the other boards and commissions. So they will go through that process, most likely starting in June. And then they'll go through several of those meetings. Planning and zoning will then come next, most likely in July and August. And we are projecting, of course, this is all subject to change. If there's more meetings or less meetings, it may turn out a little differently than this, but by September, the council could be considering the recommendations from Preservation Commission, planning and zoning, and of course, the development agreement itself. And that development agreement will incorporate many of the other details and elements. I know there's been questions on police parking, how to ensure that we continue to have adequate police parking on-site. Those details, for example, would be set forth in a development agreement. And also, pretty much the last thing here, is that the buyer has agreed that, and the city is agreeing, that we will help them get through their approval process, just like any project, and that they will do so by May 31st of 2024. Otherwise, this agreement kind of goes away, everything except for that non-refundable $100,000. But we agree that that's a reasonable time. But we agree that that's a reasonable timeframe, a year from the end of this coming May, so in 2024, to have all of those approvals done and set forth. And with that, Mayor and Council, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or concerns? Yeah, I just want to emphasize that this is just a sales agreement, it's not a development agreement. So putting up through the terms and conditions of how the property will be acquired by the Prescott Common LLC, and then the next step would be to work with them on actually crafting their development agreement, and then having to go through each of the public processes, whether it's planning and zoning, Preservation Commission, and water allocation review. So all those public steps will be taken, and the public will have a chance to be present and voice their concerns if they have any. I think the only comment I have is the address for notification on this contract is listing here two oh one South Cortez. Maybe we might want to alter that and make sure it gets delivered rapidly to where we actually are now.
Old habits, definitely, we can do that.
Okay, very good. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Very well, entertain a motion on this.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number two zero two three dash one eight two four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
That was an answer.
All right, we'll move on to item eight D.
Approval of city contract number two zero two three dash one six zero, a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for the planning, design, and construction documents for the Granite Dells Gateway Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Joe Baines, Recreation Services Director for the city. I'm just going to give you a short little PowerPoint, just to give you some background and some perspective on the project. I think it's important to point out a few of these things on here. See, so since the late 1990s, the city's been acquiring properties in the Granite Dells. That includes Watson Lake, Willow Lake, all of those. Strategically, these pieces have come together over these last, what, 25, 30 years? As I said, that includes Watson, Willow Lake, Point of Rocks, Easter Peak, Peavine Trail. We've done a lot of work in this area. In total, the city controls about 2,600 acres in the Dells. In total, that includes Willow Lake. In November of 2022, the city of Prescott and Prescott Valley in the county entered into a ten-year intergovernmental agreement with the intent of cooperatively purchasing about 3,200 acres in the, of contiguous property in the Dells. Glassford Hill is, is adjoining to the Dells, and I think it's important, and I'm going to show you that video that I think I showed you before, that kind of shows that a little bit better from the bird's eye view of how all this stuff ties together. But I think it's important to note that over these last 25, 30 years, a lot, a lot of work has been done to get us to the point where we're at today. Where do I get the play here?
But we'll be doing a little bit more work on that video to make it more contiguous with everything in the same time of year. But I thought it was important to show that, to give the perspective of how all these pieces fit together. When I testified in front of the state legislature here a while back, you know, I called it pieces of the puzzle, and it really is pieces of the puzzle that have been put together purposefully over these years to get to the point where we're at today. So to the Granite Dells Gateway Park, this is just a very conceptual plan that was done as a part of the North Prescott area planning process, just kind of gave us some ideas, and we'll be refining off of this if you approve this item today. But I think it's important to point a couple of things out. Number one, this is Highway eighty-nine, as it goes through the Dells, the Fippen Museum is up here. If some of you remember the old Pinion Pines, that sits right over in here. And this is kind of the park area that we've laid out. A lot of the pieces that you see here, the lake, the trail system connections, the pedestrian bridges, those all still remain in place. But again, this, this contract, if approved, will allow us to refine all that. But I want to point out that as the gateway implies, it is not only the west gate to the potential Glassford Dells Park, but it also is a jumping off point. We have trail easements that take us up Granite Creek and connect us to the Constellation Trail, which take us over to Willow Creek. We have a trail that will follow the old Flume Pipe that goes up to the Granite Gardens, the 35 acres that we have up there that has some interesting hiking trails in there. I like to call them, you know, good trails for the kids, you know, the slick rock stuff, they love that. There will be another trail that'll be really easy for low mobility folks that'll connect to the Peavine Trail through here, so pretty minimal grade wide kind of thing, just like the Peavine Trail is. And then another more highly technical trail that'll come and weave through here and drop in at the Point of Rocks. So when we say gateway, it's not only potentially the west gate, but it's a gateway as far as you go here and you go north, south, east, west. So I think that's important to point out. Some of the features of the park that we have been discussing and that are kind of in, in that, in that field right now, we want to focus on natural play features, you know, log climbing, boulder hopping, those types of things, try to fit with nature as best as we possibly can. It won't be turf ball fields and swing sets and that type of play, but it'll be more natural play. A three acre lake, plus or minus, we've worked with game and fish. They are open to the idea of being our manager for the fishery, stocking the fish and whatnot. I mentioned the trail system and the trail connector, connections. As a part of the proposal that Kim Lee Horn put together, there will be a lot of public inclusion in the design, including, we want to do some outreach to schoolchildren, get some ideas, some of their ideas on what they like to see, understanding, you know, that it's kind of natural play features. I think that's important in the design. Again, light hand on the land, I use that a lot, that's kind of how we approach Goldwater Lake, and I think it's the right way to do things, especially in a sensitive riparian area that we have here, to try to fit in as much as we can. This planning will make the project shovel-ready. I realize, as well as you guys realize, there's a lot of, a lot of pressures on our general fund, but we will at least get to a point where we're shovel-ready and be ready to move forward at any time that we are given the go-ahead. I also want to point out that there's state and federal grant funding that are available for this project. I've talked to the state parks director numerous times, I've had him out on the site. I have no doubt that we could receive some pretty significant grant funding for a project like this. And then I also wanted to point out that, you know, we could and will have the discussion with the planner, if this is approved, about possible phasing to kind of keep the cost down, to, you know, help make the project more feasible. A couple of things about the request for qualifications, so we went out this fall with a request for qualifications. We received six firms that proposed on it, which is really pretty good, some pretty big firms. We had some really, really good proposals, no question about it, so I was really happy with that response. We had a committee that reviewed those grants, one person off our Parks and Rec Advisory Board, some folks from Public Works, of course, myself, and we went through and ranked them one through six. Kim Lee Horn was ranked number one, and after interviewing them, we selected them. We've used Kim Lee Horn in the city quite a bit, they've been very successful. Andrew Baird, who'll be the principal, and I think he's here to answer any questions, there he is, is a homegrown Prescott boy. He's certainly raising kids in this community, understands the importance and value of these open spaces and the recreation that they can provide. So I'm really happy with that choice. I think that we'll work well together to get the best possible project for the citizens of Prescott and the visitors that come to use the park. Also want to point out that, you know, a thing like this is an investment, it's an investment in our future, it's an investment economically as well with the ecotourism. I have a lot of confidence in our tourism department in being able to market something like this, which is really unusual across the state or across the nation, really, to have a 5,000-plus acre park. There's not too many of them. I did a little Google research on it, and there's very, very few. But I really feel like we have the in-house abilities to market this thing, to grow our market share of that ecotourism, and continue to, you know, have a bigger presence in that field. And I think we've come a long ways, but I think we still got a ways to go, especially with something like this. So with that, again, I have the engineer here, if you have any questions for him, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Joe, for the presentation, totally supportive of it. I have one question, could you go back to slide four?
Whoops. Where did it go? New area. It's just there. It's hiding here somewhere.
Yeah, number four. The one concern I have is this park is going to be accessed off of Highway eighty-nine, and there are currently no lights at the intersections on either end. And with the increased traffic and with the volume of traffic on eighty-nine and the speed of that traffic, I know when I go down to the Flume Trail, for example, and take Granite Dells Road and wide down, when I come out, it's really hard to turn left onto eighty-nine just because of the volume of traffic it carries these days. Are there any future plans with building a gateway park at this location for traffic signals, or how will traffic be handled for a large recreation area such as a gateway park?
Well, I do know that in Public Works's capital, five-year capital, I believe there's a roundabout slated for in here. I don't know if there's anybody from Public Works, but I think there's discussions of a roundabout in this particular area. As a part of the project, we will be doing a traffic analysis. One of the things that we talked about, too, is maybe making this a one-way. So this was the county, the county has dedicated it back to the city, so we have this right-of-way that goes through here. So one of the things we talked about is maybe some of the parking comes right off of the road here, and this becomes a one-way. So all those, Counselor Moore, those are all things that we'll take into consideration as we enter into this planning phase.
Okay, thank you, I'm totally supportive of the project, thank you, Joe.
Counselor Rick, Counselor Holman can tell me?
Yes, hi, Joe, thanks for doing this, it's great, love that drone photography. You know, there was a couple pictures in there in the drone photography that I would see where the, the rocks were stacked. Can we control people climbing on top of those? Are they, some of them are smaller. I mean, will there be rules about knocking them off, or, you know how kids are, just because it could be very dangerous?
It is interesting, because, you know, you go out in the Dells and you'll see these, you know, 2,000 pound, 5,000 pound rocks that just, you don't know how they stay up there, but they've been there for thousands of years. You know, we, we do have legal protections through recreational immunity, we do tell people to stay on the trails. So we don't want to have just a mishmash of trails and people going everywhere. So it'll be more designated, you know, climbing areas, more designated trail areas, so we'll discourage off-trail use and that type of thing, but that can be a hard behavior to control. But yeah, it does amaze me, too, when you look at those, you kind of go, it just seems like a hard wind would push them over, but that's not the case.
That's great, thank you. I just want to be able to protect those formations, and, you know, if they're using their carabiners or whatever to climb up those, will there be some control on the actual mountain climbing or the rock climbing part of it?
Absolutely, they'll be designated climbing areas and permitting and all the things that would go with that. And that, that's a process that's been ongoing, we've been working on.
Thank you.
Counselor Tenney.
Thanks for your presentation, Joe. This is a super exciting thing that we've been working toward for decades, really. Appreciate all of the excellent work that you've done with, with your folks and our partners on the city and state level as well. Just to clarify, the rock formations that we saw in the drone footage just now, none of them are within this, this gateway park, correct?
They're not within the park itself, but they're within the preserve.
Sure, yeah, yeah, so far, much farther off the trail, a lot of them wouldn't even be readily accessible, but it sounds like you've got some plans for keeping people in the right areas. And so far, we've had hundreds and hundreds of acres open to, to the public through transportation. And so far, we've had hundreds and hundreds of acres open to the public through trails and various areas of this without any kind of problems of that nature. Is that correct?
That's correct. And there's been some climbing incidences over the years, but very, very rare.
Great, great. Well, again, this is a super exciting thing. I think it's something that will benefit our entire region and particularly the citizens of Prescott. So you'll have my support for sure.
You know, thank you, Joe. I had a, when I first saw this, $360,000 for consulting services is a pretty big tab. But looking at the scope of services, project management, preliminary design, final construction documents, subconsultant services, lake irrigation design, field survey and geotechnical, that's a lot of expertise that needs to examine these areas. And it looks like this gateway park really can stand alone in its functionality. Doesn't really require connection with the broader developments of the Glassford Dells or some of the other areas. It can function almost completely. And then once those other connections are available, they certainly can be designed to connect in an appropriate way. One of the things I was concerned about, knowing the huge cost overruns in the I-17 Flex design because the federal government came in and changed some EPA requirements for removal of a lot of that rock, huge $76 million cost overrun. So I'm concerned, is any of the designs here might be subject to maybe new waters of the world types of federal protections that might cause this to be substantially higher after we've done all the preliminary design work?
Mayor, good. That's a good question. That'll also be part of our due diligence in all of this planning, too. And I also wanted to point out, we'll have a much better grasp on what the total cost of the project is at about 30% design, which I believe we're going to have in May, somewhere in there. So that'll give us a little better idea, but we'll be looking for those kinds of pitfalls as well. I don't know of any currently, Mayor, but that's a good point. It's something to keep an eye on.
It's kind of hard to predict, isn't it? Now, I know that there is some plans to utilize that old bridge. Is that going to be included in this? Will it be an assessment, or can this bridge be reconditioned or recertified for safe public use?
Yes, we are going to do some structural analysis of that bridge. I've also had discussions with Arizona Eco Development, who will, they'll kind of be lakefront property to this park about participating in that. And it seems as though they're willing to look at that, too. But I think individualized, it's about a $10,000 cost to assess the structural ability of that bridge. I believe it's good. It was built in 1923, but they built them well back then. In fact, the bridge, I read a little history on it, the most well-known bridge builder in the state of Arizona in the 1920s and 1930s was behind this bridge. Also had a contractor friend of mine who built the Arizona Approach to the Hoover Dam, so he's got a little bit of bridge-building experience behind him. And he went down there and said, yeah, this is, you know, better than when it was built just because, you know, concrete does continue to strengthen over years.
That's interesting to know. Can this be possibly phased in its development total cost so at least we can move progressively forward before we might have some federal government interference?
Yes. We talked about that. We discussed that with the engineer, that we would look at some possible phasing, too. One of the things about the phasing in here is that a lot of the higher-ticket items would probably happen to happen in the first phase. But yes, certainly we'll look at phasing. We'll look at, you know, any cost considerations that can make this as good a park as it can be, but try to be, you know, penny-wise.
And you're going to be here until it gets completed, right, Joe?
Very good chance. Good Lord willing.
Good answer there. Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. I would just like to emphasize that this 20-acre park will be ADA accessible to all, including the mobility impaired. It'll be multi-generational. Grandparents can get out there with the little grandkids. And I just think that this will be a wonderful project for the city, and it will have benefits for many years to come.
Counselman Rusing, yes. Certainly the ADA will come into consideration, but really, for me, that's important. I think the part of the lake that's important to me is that it'll have a really flat trail around it that'll be maybe, what, a quarter of a mile? Not a very long trail, but it'll be really user-friendly. So I envision Grandma and Grandpa taking the grandkids out and, you know, throwing a fishing line in the lake, and they can take a little walk around the trail that'll be flat around there. And then the trail that will access to the Peavine, the one that'll be a little more Peavine-like, will be a low-grade kind of trail with a densely compacted surface so that, you know, people with low mobility can get out there. But that's important to me. It's important to the citizens, and that'll be certainly, you know, in the plan.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or concerns? Do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. Dottie Morris?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to let you know, I'm Vice President of the Granite Dells Preservation Foundation. We're the nonprofit, and we're attempting to both educate the public about the possibility of this fantastic project the city is taking on, as well as, I hope, the state and Prescott Valley and surrounding areas. But we are very, very much in favor of, hoping that you will vote in favor of this. And I want to thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
That's all.
That's all? All right, then, I'll entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2023-160.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
I didn't realize that the voting click was going to be such a disappointment for all of you. Approval of City Contract Number 2023-158 for an airport ground lease with Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University at Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Lovefield.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Robin Sabata, Airport Director. And also behind me, I have the Dean of the College of Aviation, Tim Holt, and the Chair of Embry-Riddle's Flight Line, Parker Northrup, joining us here today because, of course, this is about an Embry-Riddle lease. But this isn't just any old lease that's happening. This is pretty monumental, and it's happened, I think, in fairly short order. Just wanted to give you a little bit of history for some fun. Some of you know that back in 1928, there was a major donation of land to the city of Prescott from the Fane family, particularly Granville Dan Fane. And also, there have been other donations inland. The airport was named for Ernest A. Love, as we well know. And here's some opening ceremonies here. And other major events include 1947, there was the first airline flights with TWA, so you had DC-3 up there. 1978 was when Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, based in Florida, decided to make this their Western Campus. So in doing so, they started out with about six acres of land. Eventually, they doubled that to about 11.5 acres. You can see the air traffic control tower in the top right. That's about a 79-foot tower. And as you all probably read in the newspaper, the new tower on the other side of the field will be about 168 feet tall. That's so they can see all points of the airport. Down in the bottom left, we had our inaugural jet service on United. And in 2021, we had our new passenger terminal built. So lots happening out at the airport. This list is certainly not inclusive. There's been many legacy families, such as the James family and others, that have been supportive of the airport in the past. So here's the updated airport layout plan. This is what you approved back in 2022. Just to give you an idea, this is where the current Embry-Riddle main area is. That is about 11.5 acres off of Melville Road. They also occupy some space up here. It's called the Q hangar. And that Q hangar is about 1.2 acres. And then on this side, it's what we refer to as the West Ramp. And the West Ramp is another 2.1 acres. So they're in three locations currently on the airfield. What we're looking at today is this area over here. So back in August of 2022, there was an RFP entitled Flight Training and Education Business Development Opportunity: Strategic Academic Flight Education, or what we refer to as the Safe Complex. The initial phase, so this was for approximately 547,000 acres, which is right here in this area. And to show you what was actually the concept drawing for what was put on the airport layout plan, this is the concept drawing. You can see this is the initial concept. This was about eight months ago or 10 months ago, I guess, when you voted on that, or actually, almost a year ago. This is the area where there would be some ramps, some hangars. This is the major Frank Scheel Boulevard Drive that's proposed to be in this area that we had talked about a year ago. And just to give you an idea, this is taxiway Alpha. And down here is the general aviation runway and the parallel commercial service runway. I'm going to be referring to an end-around, so this is an end-around taxiway where you can go around the end of a runway and to the other side. And up here is some area that we're currently getting appraised for possible acquisition, 62 and 1/2 acres. So ultimately, the purpose of the RFP was to encourage the establishment of a flight training and education business development opportunity, to encourage a more efficient, balanced use of a busy airfield area and associated airspace, to also promote enhanced aviation safety. Because as I had shown here, one of the problems we're running into is if you're down in this side of the airfield and you wish to get to this runway up here, the general aviation, you have to cross the commercial service runway. That was occurring over 100,000 times a year. And that type of crossing, obviously, is a concern for safety. So we just as soon have the general aviation aircraft in close proximity, not only to the general aviation runway, but also to be able to use that end-around to use the commercial service runway. We do have a third runway, and this is the crosswind runway used when winds require. In addition, it is to enhance revenue at the airport and generate the type of self-sufficiency that the FAA requires. So bids were due on September 8th, and Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University was the only bidder. Bids were reviewed per city requirement. Embry-Riddle's bid was deemed responsive and referred to the city attorney and airport staff to create a lease, and that's what we've been working on for the past several months. The ground lease that is in your packet before you is a 25-year term with two 10-year options or extensions that can be exercised if the development is actually undertaken. Area 1 is this area right here. It's approximately 420,000 square feet. This will be the first area to be developed. You can see that this is for a new aircraft ramp, a vehicle parking lot, and a minimum 10,000-square-foot multi-use structure that will be located in this area. Area 2 is this area down here, and those improvements will be determined at a later date. All of these improvements in this area need to be completed by March 1st, 2029, versus these area improvements need to be completed in the first five years. To support the future safe complex, the city has agreed to the following. We will be installing a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, or SWIP-compliant, hangar. This already went through budget earlier this year. It's in this fiscal year budget allocation right here. And this is something we've needed for some time to wash aircraft properly under our Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan requirements. The second item is to bring utilities to the edge of the property. That is actually accomplished by bringing in the utilities for this particular SWIP-compliant aircraft wash rack. The next thing is to assure availability of the bidirectional taxiway. So just so you know right now, this was actually scheduled for demolition, this bypass area right here. We held that off from demolition. That was going to be demolished in the Taxiway Charlie Phase 3 relocation project. And so we actually got it into that project that this will actually have a seal over the top of it, and the lights will remain so that two aircraft can pass opposite direction. We've also applied for another grant to study this area here, this area, and make it a remote run-up area. So this is going to be, right now, this is going to be Taxiway Juliet. And we envision this as an opposite-direction Taxiway Romeo, ha-ha, that will be here to allow aircraft to be able to bypass both directions because it's going to be pretty busy coming down that taxiway Alpha. In addition, we will be collaborating on a $600,000 state grant. It will be allocated through the Arizona Department of Transportation. They're writing up the paperwork now. It required a $600,000 match, which Embry-Riddle's $4.8 million initial investment will more than cover. We will be paving a dirt portion of Ruger Road from the existing entrance to the bottlenecks right to here. It is a dirt road, and it'll just be paved. There are some sewer improvements that will be coming through here that have been scheduled long before this project so that there may be some interruptions here, but we will make sure that they will always have access to the ramp. But that is part of the sewer line project that's coming through in this area. And then also, we've agreed to include Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University in future airfield perimeter access road planning. The annual revenue that we will be deriving from this project will be initially $206,000 a year, with it escalating, when Area 2 is completed, to about $225,000 a year in annual rents coming to the airport. In addition, we expect additional fuel flowage fees, so this is about a quarter million dollars a year project. Over the 45-year life, it will be, as Mark had said earlier in the study session about the recurring revenues, this will be a recurring revenue stream that will yield more than $10 million back to the airport in rent over the 45-year term. And this lease has in it the traditional reversion option, which means at the end of 45 years, any improvements made on this property do revert back to the city of Prescott, and they become our possession. So with that in mind, I do have Representatives of Embry-Riddle here if you would like to hear from them on this rather important occasion.
I don't know about the rest of the council, but I certainly would like to hear from them.
Okay.
Dr. Hold?
Mayor, Council, thank you. Anybody that knows me knows I'm typically pretty brief, to my own detriment, I guess, at times. Normally, in my 30 years of working in aviation, I've always talked about family and collaboration and partnerships. I don't really have to talk about that, which is nice. I think our 50 years of working together, or close to 50 years working together, as the gold standard in aviation training and America's, you know, hometown, I think speaks for itself. So we look forward to what we can do together as we continue to work nationally with pilot shortage, with flight training, and holding that grant, that gold standard up with your help. So we appreciate that. And with that, if you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Dr. I know we've had numerous conversations over the years about the ongoing necessity for important and substantial flight training and the need for more first officers and even more so, I think, at this point, captains, being able to fill the gaps in filling up those cockpits so we can continue to have a growth of aircraft and air traffic capability, and especially in our airport. So I certainly appreciate Embry-Riddle's investment and continuing expansion of their flight training programs. Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. I'd like to echo the Mayor's comments. Thank you for your investment in our community. Our airport is a major economic driver for the region. And also, I'd like to thank you for working with us in improving the safety of our airport with some elimination of those hotspots on the runways. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's definitely our pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Then I will entertain a motion on this issue.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2023-158.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please vote.
Aww. Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Done deal, lady.
I'm going to miss it.
Okay, are we all done pushing our buttons?
We're not going to have the clicker anymore. More clicker. End of an era.
Well, I think with that said, I think our meeting is nearly adjourned. I would make a quote here from one of our greatest presidents, Ronald Reagan. "Far more can be accomplished by the simple prayers and actions of good people than by all the statesmen or armies of the world." So let's keep that in mind and do all of our parts. This meeting is adjourned.